So we're on?
We're on. The only thing you want to know is, so when more than two people are on, it'll probably go to, it might highlight somebody else. What you want to look for is, and this only happens when there's more than, like normally with the there's a pin, pin means you can like make sure that they're showing. Once there's more than two people, it's called spotlight. So you click on the three dots and it'll do show spotlight and that'll spotlight us for everybody for the whole night.
Do I need to do that?
You will, if you see that like document example is in the big black window, that's what everybody sees online. So you want to make sure that they see us. And if you have any questions, I can run over, but you want to like look for the three dots and there'll be an option that says add spotlight. And that means it'll spotlight it for everybody. It may stay like that, maybe it will.
All right.
Is it recording?
I, I call.
Yeah.
We're good?
Right now we don't have it.
No? Yeah, you're good.
Take your shirt.
If it only shows like, you know, a window with.
Yeah. Question for you. Uh, let me think, is a permit necessary to remove an empty rural tank from a basement? And it is, yeah. Marty, permit isn't needed.
It is.
Yeah, so we'll call the guy tomorrow.
And that's why.
Yeah, and they didn't hand it off.
You know them?
I do.
Any good?
Hi Marty.
I've never had any issues with them. They haven't worked any place, not worked.
Is he the attorney, Frank? Is he the attorney?
Hey, we got him.
Yeah. Who's the attorney?
I don't think so.
So Marty, Joe's the attorney.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe.
It's up to Tim.
Oh, maybe.
Attorney. Joe's the CPA. Oh, they don't say CPA on it. Mark was, whatever. They, my job is more dealing with the town. And they've never had any issues. Need something, they could ask when they get it.
Yeah, it's about that.
He's been squeezing over there. Is it part of the money?
Yes.
I know, we're all.
No, I know Lucas isn't coming.
And that's how I know. Ooh, they're spicy and I can smell them. She over here chewing all up my ear.
I had sit in, it looks like something like sitting in a subway for.
Well, I had nineteen two fifty. So sorry, this rang. What's up? Yeah.
I was thinking about that.
Really? I think you just started.
That's okay.
Okay.
I put a few out there.
I guess I'm doing a type of school.
No, it's like. They should. You did get it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I told this guy where he, uh, I went or he was going to notify everybody.
Yeah, but you need, but you need to.
Do you want to go warn anymore now?
Yeah, you have to.
Okay.
You don't want to shut up yourself.
Right. Looks like it. Oh, really? Guess what? Thank you.
Here, this is no business. Really. Edgar emailed me to set up for the.
He showed that.
Martin, yeah, this is somebody else. And I also, every morning, I'm talking to Martin, like, and I just didn't, he should do this.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I went online.
And I didn't. Put people in. Sippy, you know, Mercury, he's mad about sewer. I heard my name out there three months ago.
I said that, that, uh, I asked you to put me on the meeting. I eat it.
I don't do that.
So I filled the thing out online and Edgar emailed me back, said he notified, if he could notify you and thing. But I didn't see my name on the thing.
You had to sign up.
Okay, I didn't know.
It's twenty, by three, you like minimum though. She has to do that. Right. Yeah, so somehow you just do. I know, she didn't, thank you.
Cool.
I'll be on my mom's next. The house. Are we doing a, have our mine inspection?
You know what, I, I asked Mark that question the other day because Jack asked me and I asked Mark.
I asked my, huh? I've asked Mark five times, he just doesn't answer.
Have the letters been glad yet?
No.
Thought we had to do that.
I mean, I guess, that's why I was.
No, but yeah, yeah. I mean, they would come out of here somehow.
It's long.
So.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, maybe he's waiting for something from me.
No, I know. I did send him an email. You sent me an email, I don't remember.
I did, I sent him an email.
Yeah, I forwarded to him. Smack him in the morning.
Yeah, I know, smack him. He's a little overwhelmed.
Nah, he's fine.
I just want to. What's that? Freshly squeezed mango juice.
Oh.
Okay.
Question there. Freshly squeezed in what?
Chili spice. They're both eating hot stuff over here. No, it's just chili spice mango. I'm a trader, dude. It's a bit too dark.
For lunch, I went to, I made dinner, I went to.
Enter. I just want.
I shouldn't go, I have two. I used to do the one in South Philly.
Right.
Change, and then when I found out. Yeah, Springfield.
It's not six or eight yet.
Oh, yeah.
There's a taxi electric.
She's.
No, you don't. There you go. They can hear you, they can hear you.
Did you get my text? Immediate, so you come in immediately.
Yeah.
Sit with me. Let's get a lid. How are you, Ron? What is that?
Come.
You know, who are you? Not for me. I mean, I'm, we're doing these very chairs. Ooh, you are right. Look at my image. Good word. I can be honest with you, I can be honest with you.
Thank you. How you doing?
Good, all right.
You? Good, nice to see you again.
Hello, chief.
Hi. How are you? Ma? All right. What do I show you, just the visuals, so you see what I'm talking about. I took a red dot. Is where I would have answered them from the.
Good morning. We're sound, it's not bad.
That's the song.
Yep.
I just want to make free time.
Yeah. The one second down there.
And use it.
So I think I'll catch you now. Two parts, so we need to.
Oh. Yeah, she is. She's dead.
That's all in it. That's all in it.
It can't leave anyplace for like twenty-eight. DJ two hour living class, because I gotta say bye to everybody.
The longest hello's in the box.
Yeah.
By the time you're finished hello's, you gotta make the rounds again.
It's so true, like, yeah.
Three of them are tan. I live on them in the sun. Oh, yeah. Or the pool, swimming, I'm on the pool. So I fish eight, so I just stand on the, I just stand on the pool deck. And then we're down, we're down at the, every weekend, so we're on the water all weekend. Where? Yeah.
Four. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, we're on the academia, so we're not far from the city. Yeah, we take our boat, so you know, the, um, test weekend. Yeah, we can boat right there. Yeah, it's, uh, the test weekend, the owners are actually very, very good friends. So my son's been in there fifteen minutes or thirty-four. Uh-huh. I was good there. Yeah. Yeah, showers and all that. And then.
Okay, you know, I mean, love it.
Yeah, so. I remember there was something out there. I was, yeah, I was. You missed so long that they'd use her in front of, in front of, in her car. She was here. Which I don't know. Something like that. So I.
I don't know what I was.
Hello, hello.
Yeah.
I don't know what I was. Thank you.
Yeah, my, my time there's safe. My time there's there.
Sarah, can I push your hair up a little bit so it's a little bit in here? Just a little bit forward, it's on seventy-five. Could I talk to you before you?
Yes.
She won't take.
I just, she'll join us. How are you?
He's a kid.
Wait, I think New York, I know. The family members that live outside. My two very dear friends of mine. And Chip Monkley, I don't know, um, over by the Abbey or, um, is it the, is it John Ragny on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ashley Avenue. Yeah. All this, is it all that? No. Standby, I'll find out. It's not prior, but, but it's close to prior, but, hold on. Standby. Who, who, who?
You're leaving everybody, but I'm meeting tonight to help my staff.
Let's see, let's see how things go. Now.
United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with every day just as.
Council President Bernice Clark Sigerson.
President.
Councilman Douglas Iger.
Here.
Council Beth Ann Johnson.
Here.
Council Michelle Mill.
Here.
Council Vice President Chanté Miller.
Here.
Council Michelle Stubbs. Michelle Albert. Councilor Stubbs.
Yes.
Mayor Hammack.
President.
There are no announcements for the meeting.
Yes.
Prior to, prior to some.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
Before the meeting, um, council had had an executive session where we discussed personnel matters and pending litigation.
Thank you. Next, we have presentations. And then commendational sergeant, Jeff.
We're a chair.
Come on, Sarge.
So, uh, this commendation is related to an incident from last month in which Sergeant Brown and Officer McGrady were able to locate an attempted murderer, uh, take him into custody without any issue or incident, fortunately. And then the subsequent investigation resulted in a search warrant of his property and the recovery of at least three, uh, long guns, multiple handguns and ammunition, as well as, uh, firearms making equipment. Um, so it was a job well done by both officers. So I have for you, Sergeant, a citation, a commendation awarded to Morton Police Sergeant Jeffrey Brown. Whereas Sergeant Brown is recognized for his outstanding performance, bravery and dedication to duty in the arrest of a violent and possibly armed attempted murderer. This meritorious display took place on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five at eight twenty AM. Whereas Sergeant Brown responded to take over surveillance duties of the attempted murder suspect's vehicle. Armed with a photo of the suspect, Sergeant Brown instantaneously recognized the suspect as he approached the vehicle. Without concern for his own well-being, Sergeant Brown leapt into action and engaged the suspect. Through his superior training and skills, Sergeant Brown held the subject at bay until assisting officers could secure him. Sergeant Brown later coordinated the SWAT team response to search the suspect's apartment. The search resulted in the recovery of multiple weapons which had been illegally possessed by the suspect. Whereas in recognition of Sergeant Brown's keen observation and quick actions, Sergeant Brown and his arrest of the suspect distinguished himself through an act of gallantry in the line of duty. The arrest and incarceration of this violent offender has made the Morton borough community significantly safer. In these most trying of times, never forget the difference you make every day.
Amen.
Thank you, bud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go back to work or do you want to? Do you want to hear the rest of us?
We're gonna listen.
Just to that point, um, I know that, uh, I say it every time, Sergeant, that we appreciate the work that you do. Um, this is no different in that appreciation, but I think stands as a reminder as to how much in the line of duty that you put yourself and all of our officers put themselves in and you do so selflessly. And that takes a lot. So from all of us to you, thank you. And, uh, it's a good thing, they got our, they got our name wrong, didn't they, in the, in the news article?
Not sure.
Yeah. And that's why everyone was like, what? So it's all good, but again, thank you. Thank you.
And times you start, Mr. D? Michael Lane, one twenty-three West Sylvan Avenue, Morton, Commonwealth President, Commonwealth President of the United States of America. Adam President, Members of the Council, Madam Mayor, and our Police Department. Sometimes events are happening around the nation of a way of affecting local communities. I'm getting at is this, is there a plan in place to continue aid of any Morton resident who might find himself or herself snatched off the streets by these masked unidentified miscreants?
Politicizing the meeting.
So this is important. Anybody who doesn't like what I have to say, if you'll forgive my language, I'll say this, piss off. Do you have any, is there a plan in place to continue aid of any resident who might find himself or herself snatched off the street? We don't know who these people are, they may very well be the law. Then again, they could be human traffickers, it could be a complex plant, it could be the KGB. And any one of us in here could find ourselves in that, in that kind of predicament. So, and so if there's no plan in place, then I suggest you come and work one out. And since, since the subject of politicization, a meeting was brought up, I was accosted, that's how I put it, last month, by an individual who does not like me defending county councilor Michelle Miller. I'll defend anybody I want. You don't like it, tough. Maybe, why, why did you go off the media? Maybe you, maybe you would convince a judge, issue a restraining order telling me, and telling me to keep quiet. And if that happens, you can be sure that, and then I'll, then I'll appeal it. And you might find yourself having a right to be a big happy check. So you might want, you might want, you might want to keep that in mind, who you might be taking off. But this, this is important, this one in this nation does, it does affect us. Because any, any one of us, they're not just criminals are being pulled the street. Foodpeppers, students are being snatched out of, out of their classrooms, whom deep those are. You don't know who my speech, you don't know who they must be. I am a tonight's. So I thank you for your time and your attention and the words of the late television commentator, news commentator Edward Omero. Good night and good luck.
Thank you. Anyone else, um, Mr. Tom?
Miss Tom.
Oh, Miss Tom, I apologize.
Thank you.
Mr. Hefner?
Bill Hefner, five seventy-one South Old Milltown Road, MTA. I'm a property owner here in Morton, The Fairway Properties. Uh, I have four questions. One, I noticed the YouTube was not online for the July ninth meeting. Has, is there any place where you're up on the YouTube?
So the July ninth meeting unfortunately was not recorded on YouTube. We had, uh, we switched accounts to Morton account and we had, it was definitely, and the entire meeting was not recorded. So that, that's unavailable.
All right. So the second question I have is, is it possible to get House of the Treasurers reporting dispersment schedule tonight? Or tomorrow? Hi. Tomorrow is defined. Another thing has been the proposal out there for pre-main stage work for nineteen thousand two fifty. I know, uh, the Borough Manager Jack will be discussing it. I'm just curious what the other two written bids were as to how high they were. Now, we, I'll wait, I'll wait for the YouTube. Uh, the.
Bill, excuse me, the guy, the gentleman you told me, he never got to.
That's fine.
Okay.
It's, that's boss.
Okay.
The fourth point is, I sent an email on June thirteenth to the Council President and also to the Borough Manager requesting sewer and trash information on the accounts. And I didn't get a reconfirmation, I wasn't sure if it was actually done. I asked if there's an ETA, but I did put my request back again in this envelope, I have copies, so you can have it. There's three copies, so whoever needs it. All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Anybody else for a bullet comment? Oh, the board, yeah, all right.
Okay, then, uh, committee reports. First, the support financing in the issue. We'll start with our tax bill. That's it. And tax bill.
Yeah, I want to know what's going on. Good evening, everybody. Um, as you can see, the collections for the month of June, forty-eight thousand seventy-one dollars and fifty-two cents. Um, we are in penalty phase now. Please make sure you get me your payments by December thirty-first, the last day. Um, also, I want to remind residents, I don't know, are we streaming or not? Okay. Um, please, 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 when you send your payment, please make sure you send the tax bill stuff so I can match the payment with the property it belongs to. I, you know, there's properties that have the same tax amount, so it's not even like I can narrow down the tax amount. I shouldn't be making that assumption. I need your parcel number, I need the tax bill, so I ask you please, otherwise the check's gonna get sent back to you and it'll then be in a late period. So I just ask that you please make sure that you have the stuff there and that you have your parcel number on your check. Also, I do ask, um, that you please put your code number on your check. If there's an issue, it's easier for me to call you and tell you there's an issue with the check than it is for me to mail it back to you, then you get it, mail it back to me. It's, it's just a lot easier, so that's, they're the only few issues that I run. Okay, then I assume we'll, we'll chat later about.
Yes, my.
Thanks, guys.
All right. She's hurting, yes, thank you. Next, we have a question.
Yes, Council President, uh, can you package your, the report of the treasurer, the old funds for the month ending June thirtieth? Uh, just go over some of the, the major funds. General Fund, at the end of, uh, June, we had six hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, the Citadel Credit Union, we had a hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents. The Highway Eight, we had a hundred and forty-one thousand, seven fifty-two and zero, uh, one cents. Sewer Fund, we had four hundred and ninety-six thousand, sixty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. And sewer billing, we had a hundred and eighty-three thousand, two ninety-one, fifty-nine. I also have a, a bill list, dispersment list for your, uh, approval for June of twenty twenty-five.
So anyway, I can get a copy of that, I didn't receive.
Oh, it's not in your, okay, I have it ready, I'll go.
Okay, don't worry.
And that's been dispersment, uh, by dispersment, uh, we call. I'll make sure you get that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in debt. Didn't I report it this time?
I'll, I'll, I'll hold the bills, excuse me, what does content and creativity?
Uh, content and crea, that's for the, um, the website, right?
Yep. Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's.
All right, next, we're moving on to our next committee. Consillies and Infrastructure.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm gonna start with the engineering report first, really good.
Oh.
Um, I'm about five items on my agenda here for the engineer report. Um, twenty twenty-five, street resurfacing, so BS Demon Inc. Has finished up the work on the street paving project for the year. Um, if there are any issues, you have to let the borough know, um, so that way we can put together a list to be sent to the contractor to make sure you contact the office. Um, CDBG grant, the borough was awarded two hundred thousand dollars from Delaware County Council for pedestrian improvements, new curb, sidewalk, tree, uh, trees, et cetera, along Morton Avenue from Woodland to Walnut. The request was for three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, so we will look at these to reduce, um, the scope to me, the amount of money that we did receive from the grant. Um, and we do want to thank the county council for the funding. Um, TCED Multimodal Transportation Fund, twenty twenty-five. So there's another round of funding through the program that we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to upgrade the traffic signal at Woodland and Morton. The application is due by the end of this month, July. And we should consider applying for more money for Phase Two project. Um, this would include an upgrade to the pedestrian curb cuts, the traffic islands, the railroad crossing gates and other related work. The cost is. The cost is estimated at about one point three million, and the application is due July 31st, as they said, the end of the month. So, a resolution will need to be paid to authorize the submission of the application, and for the council president and borough manager to execute any of the documents. Um, next on my list is the DBRPC Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Grant. So, there's another grant opportunity for pedestrian improvements. There's a pre-application, and that's due, um, September 5th. And, oh, I'm sorry, we, we, well, I'm sorry. It's due September 5th, and the application is due October 31st. So, we should consider applying for, um, more work to be done on Morton, Woodland, and Yale. A hundred percent of the construction costs are covered, but the borough has paid for the design right away and other upfront costs, so we should look into that. Um, PICO Amos Lam Road Underground Electric Project. So, PICO has a project to install the new underground electric lines in Amos Lam Road under the railroad track and towards Morton Avenue. And we have asked PICO for meaning to gather some more information on that. And if there's anything on this, do you have anything on that?
I, I forgot to include this, but, um, there is another grant, another grant opportunity just to be aware of. Um, this is called Main, it's the state grant called Main Street Matters Program. Program set to support downtown redevelopment. There's planning grants, implementation grants. This isn't due till, I want to say the end of August. So, again, something we just want to look into and see if it fits what, what the borough might need. So, I'll, I'll present that information to you, so you can hook it over at your next workshop meeting.
And then, if you want to talk about the building code report.
Sure. The building code report for the month of June, there were eighteen building permit applications received and eighteen permits issued, use and occupancy certificates. Seven applications were received and six certificates were issued, and there were seven contractors' licenses issued.
Thank you, that would conclude.
We're ready, all, we're now, we're moving to our public safety.
We'll start with our police report.
Good evening, everyone. So, uh, for Department of Goals for July of 25, um, we're, we're tracking our training, our in-service, as well as others, or other training. Uh, this is to get a baseline, so that way for next year, we can, um, have an accurate representation of, of the trainings and, and what we want to do on a regular basis to, to standardizing the amount of trainings that the guys are getting. Um, the other goal is reduction of accidents. We want to reduce accidents by ten percent for the year. Presently, we're actually up twelve percent. We have fifty-four accidents compared to forty-eight last year, and for this reporting period, we have nine compared to five last year. Of note, there were three accidents, um, two in this reporting period, one in the last reporting period, at the intersection of Silver Lake and 420, Keter Avenue, in which each one of those accidents, the vehicle was coming out of Silver Lake attempting to make a left to go on to Keter and to head down towards Franklin, and each one of those accidents, uh, occurred with another car coming off the center lane to continue on to Morton Ave, uh, to make a left on the Morton Ave. So, I've already, I, I showed all the council members beforehand for reference, uh, my plan for, for trying to reduce the accidents that would take place, and, uh, been in touch with PennDOT and, uh, waiting to hear back from them. And as soon as I do, uh, we'll put the plan into action. Our, our traffic checks, uh, for this reporting period were up thirty percent overall for the year. They're up fourteen percent. Uh, the warnings that have been issued for this, this reporting period were down thirty-one percent. Uh, overall, we're down for ten percent, so that's, it, after a car stop, it's cleared as a warning as opposed to a citation. Uh, they're down by ten percent. However, our citations for the reporting period were up sixty-one percent, and for the year, they're up ten percent. Uh, all these being checked as, as an attempt to try and reduce the harm of accidents. Uh, another point I wanted to make was, uh, of those nine accidents, four of them took place in parking lots. It's, it's people, I, I don't want to say carelessly, because, I mean, they're not doing it carelessly, they just, they're not seeing the other car. Uh, I guess we could say it's careless, but there, there's no injuries to them, it's just property damage, and it's, uh, you know, people just not making the turns out of their parking spots correctly. So, uh, as much as that is not good, um, the benefit is that it's not an accident on the street with major, uh, injuries, uh, vehicles being towed and tying up traffic. So, um, you know, for the, for those type incidents, we're, we're in pretty good shape. Uh, community engagements for this time period, we had thirteen compared to three. It's over a three hundred percent increase compared to last year. Our engagements this year are ninety-four compared to thirty-one last year, a two hundred percent increase. At the last meeting, we discussed bicycle, scooter, e-bike safety, in particular related to children in the community, and, uh, I was able to get in touch with, um, the Delaware County, I want to make sure I say it correctly, the Delaware County Transportation Management Association. And they have a presentation that they can give to the kids about bike safety. Uh, they have literature that they'll hand out to the kids, um, and they'll also go over the laws, what the requirements are of the kids. They have a limited number of helmets that are available, that they're going to be bringing, and that they'll be handing out to the children that would, would come to the event. Uh, it's a very small-staffed, uh, organization with limited hours, so it, it's, I'm kind of, um, it was short, it was short notice. It's, it's next Tuesday here at Borough Hall. Uh, I did put it out on Facebook. Uh, I'm going to post it in multiple businesses in town on their windows, and I also sent an email to everybody on council with the flyer, asking you to please share with friends, family, and, and community members, uh, to try and get the word out. It's a, it's a nice way of trying to get in touch with the kids, to give them the information that they need to be safe. Secondary to that, uh, our, our officers are going to the Sina Hills Elementary for summer camp, uh, once a week. Uh, I've been officer going over and engaging with the kids in different activities. Uh, I've been posting that on Facebook, getting a lot of positive feedback and reaction from the community about our engagement with the kids. On a regular basis, the Morton children that we're dealing with are about thirty to thirty-five kids, and there's probably another seventy, seventy-five kids that are Springfield kids there. So, I can't advertise the bike safety event for that location because it's a limited-access facility. You can only get in there if you're picking your kid up. But I've contacted Springfield, so that way Springfield Police could be part of it, since it's in their township, uh, and the presenter for DC TMA has, uh, agreed that after they leave here on Tuesday, we're going to go over to the Sina Hills, to their camp. I've got that straightened out, and, uh, with the camp coordinators, and they're going to give a presentation to what's probably going to end up being over a hundred kids, uh, that they can then send the safety literature home with them also. Touch Truck is about a month away. I've been in touch with multiple participants from last year, uh, want to start putting signs up for that, also putting the advertisements in, uh, local businesses, um, and put it out on Facebook to advertise for it. And, uh, with the community engagement stuff over now, uh, we did have one major crime that was of concern. We had a strong-arm robbery at Coles. So, that incident involved a group of about six young men that looked to be anywhere from sixteen to twenty years old, that went into the Coles and committed a retail theft. And when the loss prevention officer engaged with them at the door, uh, they pushed them, and then he followed outside to get their license plate, and two of them came back, and they started throwing punches at them, at which point it gets upgraded from a non-violent theft to a actual felony robbery. Uh, these, we have very good pictures of them. Uh, we had an incident immediately afterwards in Springfield, in which they victimized a Springfield business, and we're partnering with the Springfield Police Department right now, uh, through investigative processes to try and identify them. And that is my report for the evening.
Thank you. We'll move on to the fire report. From the fire company activity report for June 2025, the company responded to forty-one incidents. The company was in service for fifteen hours and fifty minutes. Full response with personnel was one eighty-eight. Personnel hours were ninety-six hours and forty-five minutes. It was a high response rate of ten, with average response rate of five. Incident, incidents consisted of twelve automatic fire alarms, nine wire calls, two pedestrian struck, and two building fires. One carbon monoxide alarm, one medical assist, three motor vehicle accidents, one elevator rescue, one vehicle fire, and one investigation. Number twenty-five assists to other fire companies. The company had, the company had three detail for seven hours and thirty minutes, attended by ten members for twenty-six hours and thirty minutes of personnel hours. The company had three training drills for eight hours and attended by twenty-two members for forty-nine hours of personnel hours. The sixties truck duty engine, number three duty engine assignments for fourteen hours and thirty minutes, and shifted by sixteen personnel for seventy-seven hours and thirty minutes of personnel hours. There were twenty-two hours of engineering for monthly maintenance and repairs, and engineers' rooms were fit out, was separately submitted by Donald Holstein, which he. For our fire marshal report for June 2025, it follows zero fire inspections. There were zero fire investigations. There were zero fire complaints. There were no emergency maintenance. And, um, just to follow up on the knock boxes, uh, we just say he contacted the knock box company in reference to get all the businesses in warning to install the knock boxes in the building for easy access to business without breaking into the property. This report was submitted by Ruth Stokes, your fire marshal.
Thank you. My question is that, um, anybody, maybe we can, Mr. Perry, in regards to the lock boxes, they're going to be inspections.
I know there was some conversation between Dave and, and Fire Marshal about it. Uh, we made sure that when we're doing the commercial property inspections, that that's a checkbox on the, uh, inspection checklist.
That concludes our public safety report.
Thank you. Excuse me, next we have public health, sanitation, recycling.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today, you own the report for June 2025, the trash pickups. There were a total of eight pickups, and the tonnage was one thirteen point seventeen. So, because we have our second day in place, there has been an increase, but we still want to remind our residents, because there are many residents that still do not put out trash on Thursdays. We have two-day pickups from June it started to the end of September, September 30th. So, that is your second day. Also, please be advised, we have our new six-yard recycling container here at the borough, so that has been put in place. We also encourage our residents, please do not put plastic bags into your recycling. We ask that if you're bringing boxes, please flatten your boxes, so that it will make it more accessible for those that want to recycle. We also ask our residents, if the container is full, please do not discard your trash just outside the container. So, these are the things that we would ask the residents. We are grateful those residents that have been consistent with recycling. We do see that residents do utilize this service, so please just be mindful of these items. Also, be mindful of the fact that when you do put out your trash, you are to put it out the evening before the day of pickup and at dusk. We ask the residents, do not put it out during the weekend. Please be mindful of that, as once again, it does not look becoming in our community. So, these are the things that we just ask going forward, that we will be mindful of. Also, know that I will have my public health and sanitation recycling meeting from August the 12th here at 8:00 P.M. Also, I have something in regards to the health that has been shared for us. If there's anyone, give yourself the gift of health. A wellness center in Chester, August the 1st, 2025, 9:00 to 2:00, at 151 West Smith Street, Chester, and there is a flyer that we will post on the bulletin board. It is also on the website. For those ladies, it's for the mammogram, a free mammogram. You must be at least forty years of age, have not had a mammogram within the last three hundred and sixty-five days, no prior diagnosis of breast cancer. Insurance is not required, so this is something that is out there to be utilized. Once again, something that we can be proactive about. It's a service that is available for any person that must be at least forty years of age. So, I will post it on the flyer, on the bulletin board, but it is also on the website, so this is available for anyone that's interested. That was in my report, and I yield back my time.
Thank you. The one thing I would like to ask that you would be, councilwoman, is, can you just contact the city, um, the side of the bed, you know, on that side, there. Who has your, who ordered your tour today? You might want to open that order.
New containers, okay.
Get the line up in here, there you go. Thank you. Francis on the cleanup of the, of that section. Let's move us to our lower audience. Ready?
Good evening. There, there's nothing on the agenda except, um, speaking of the Stormwater Collaborative, but I did want to mention the council, but you all received two emails from Carl this Saturday concerning, uh, some mortgages we're looking at, and you would be so kind as to review those and let Carl and I know if you have any comments or questions, because I guess we will discuss those in the committee meeting, um, see if there's any, and they present to the council next month for, um, voting on them and advertising some of the work. Other than that, the Stormwater Collaborative met on July 9th, as it does every month on the second Tuesday. I believe that the borough actually printed out copies of the minutes, mine were written all over, from both the collaborative meeting, the regular meeting, and then the PRP, which happens directly afterward. This, these particular, if you did pick up a copy of it, usually the bank statements are with it. The bank statements tend not to come here, and that will tell you any financial, um, anything financially to do with the, uh, collaborative, as I know the mayor had made some comment about, uh, seeing their financials on their website.
I was asking for the annual report.
And, um, the, um, everything's, everything's there generally with the, with the minutes, uh, so hopefully at the next meeting, she'll have those, um, the June and July, um, banking statements, um, show the, the handful of checks that are written amongst, and, um, and all the money they got in grants in the bank. Um, as far as what happened at the meeting, one thing that came up that I found interesting was that not only have we complained about these terrible ash trees that have to be taken down in the parks, and now we have the pine oaks are getting attacked by some sort of beetle or other bugs, so we have to start looking at some of these oak trees and see if they also are, how well they're doing. Unfortunately, I did bring up that, something we need to be aware of. So much, so much that goes on at these meetings, is, since it's a collaborative, there are things that have to do with Morton, or with all of Levittown municipalities, so it's hard to do a, a very short rendition of, of what, what occurred. Uh, one thing that was talked about was, um, any of the walking areas in Sigmar or J. Dubs, uh, there's a number of things that the collaborative can help through the PRP about, um, surfacing walkways and things like that. So, as more work is done in the parks, we can bring that up, because the collaborative will assist with replanting trees or anything like that as to those projects are going on, and fulfilling the grant requirements. There's, and there's different training that's being offered, uh, there's always some training against municipal workers through. against municipal workers through, uh, the M C, the M T X training, uh, this, this year, probably concentrated on trees, talk about doing about a, a, a two-hour video training for the municipal workers and then actually taking them to one of the municipalities and showing them the proper way to plant trees and bushes and so on and so forth. Do something outside and that'll be later in the call. The municipality, um, borough manager will be informed about that. And to push also, something that we've talked about several times, is you have your free house calls through Stormwater. They, as, as a municipality, um, one of the representatives from Stormwater will come to your property and look it over. If you have a water problem with erosion or sipping water or your inter-zidup needing plants, anything like that, Jamie or someone will come and look over your properties, make suggestions to you, and can provide sometimes free plants, trees and bushes, all sorts of ideas. But, um, this is part of what, what they do. This is, uh, while this is an educational program that, um, Stormwater's involved with, and to feel free to, um, take advantage of that, um, that offer. Doug is putting all this in the newsletter and, um, I can be contacted if anybody has questions too, and I can get you in contact with, um, all these folks. And with the pollution reduction plan part of the meeting, this is where, where the drill stuff happens, because that's where the grant money comes out. Again, there's a lot of, uh, education and since Morton is affiliated with the Springfield School District, but we don't have our own school district, it gets a little complicated. Of course, some of the, some of, some of the municipalities do new programs with Stormwater through schools. We don't have that. If, if we wanted to set something up with the kids, maybe on a Saturday or, um, something that's something we could discuss, because there's a number of programs that, um, they do. There's a real cute thing on their website about fish, that they have the kids meet different fish, wooden fish and hang them on fences, but fish that live in our local lakes and rivers and ponds and so on and so forth, just, just as for instance. But if anybody has any questions about all this, the easiest thing to read the minutes. They're really concise and they explain to you what's going on. And again, if I have any questions, um, let me know.
Councilwoman Miller, can I charge you with insurance debt on my, my next council move in regards to your children?
Well, I, I can see, it's, it's a little, little tough this time of year, so the school will be coming back in session, but it's, it's a possibility to see.
Can you come back to council, uh, and look at our position based that some people want for our, our children? The other thing I wanted to say, you said you, you gave the owners a job, um, that just to make sure that from your, you know, workshops, so if you, if you're handling your stuff, you know?
But that's for the municipal workers.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, but that's something, that'll be sent out, yeah, but that's not told clearly.
But if you get time, you can plan it.
But we don't have a date.
We don't have a date?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a, a set date. They're giving it up in, you know, October or something.
But no dates?
No, no date was set.
Okay. The other thing is, can the insurer that you provide annual report on the budget? Said she asked for the annual.
Well, that's something, um, I had them Jamie explain, they don't exactly, the newest annual report per se, because it's based on grants and projects.
Right. Today's not a grant from the state, right?
Yeah, but I, I just want to give you a whole list of the grants, um, if you want to do it.
No, I'm just asking a question. So we have an update. When you look at your budgets, the budget's in there and that goes in for the state.
I, I, I understand. That's something we have to talk to Jamie Anderson about, about what's, you know, what they said there, checkbook is open. So I hope that I, I'll, I'll get you a list, I have a list of, you know?
And I'm going to charge you again that you're talking to, because you create stuff.
Can I just ask a really good question, just going back to the original question last time we had a meeting about the position that you hold? You don't have that report?
Pardon me?
You don't have that report?
We, it's, no, I don't.
I just said I know. Why, why are you? Because with the position that you're holding, you actually, you should have the report, especially to report to us.
I don't have that information at the moment. I can't get that anywhere.
Okay, and if you can't get it, who, who do we see? Are, are you the treasurer?
I, that is my, my title, that is my, that is a title that I have. And also this position is no remuneration or anything. The other people that are paid by Stormwater are Jamie Anderson and Karen Hall.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just mentioning that, but, um, and to give you this information, I don't know, um, they're not for profit organizations, so just, um, we're requesting that.
Thank you. Next, we have to be at the number.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, just two quick items. Um, there is going to be a blood drive here at the gym on September sixteenth from two to seven. I'm actually meeting with, uh, affiliates from the Red Cross tomorrow to go over like access to the portal and things like that. As soon as I get that, I will post it online and people can act, start signing up. So be on the lookout for that. And, uh, we do have the official newsletter that's going to come out soon. Um, it's actually, there's a copy here, uh, that you can take if you'd like. There's a bunch of good information on there. It's like the summer newsletter and we have to probably have one of the fall ones again, maybe just keep it ongoing newsletter. But there's some good information, so make sure you get one. It will be available online as well. I'll put a headline, you know, link up on the website to download it if you would like. And, uh, yeah, so we'll go through that. That's all I have tonight. Uh, we, honestly, we haven't any more. But the movie night did happen.
Yes, we were getting their fucking skaters. It was, it brought back memories. Any other questions? Let's next go to our parks and recreation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm done. Before the central yard drive, I saw somebody by the ground. Someone was playing big and said, you know, that's a different shoe.
Other parks and reces, so.
Thank you. Just want to remind, uh, if you're not aware of the mosquito attacks. There's some serious attacks by mosquitoes. So if you're in your yard, if you're in the park, let us know and we can have some guns to get rid of these things out there in that park. And even in your own backyard, if you're, if you're taking a trying disease, these mosquitoes are trying diseases. They might as well get their dick. Let us know. Continue to make more of a safe playground. And as I said once before, to achieve in the fire department, I may. These items here, I want to give to a youth who did something on behalf of the fire department, on behalf of the police department, let them know that park recreation has their backs. And we appreciate teaching them how to kick a football. Chess, I'm trying my best. Nobody's coming back to me with anybody that knows how to teach. But we're still trying to build friendship in the community with our young people. This is M V Ps, Morton's valuable people, human beings being human, building up our young children in the neighborhood to whom we are on the ground, under the ground, they will be standing on what we placed out there for. Morton is a great, great community and we need to have strong, strong, strong events for them to build their life. So if you want to give a child something, if they did something great, feel free. I'm done, thank you.
All right, to add on to, um, Mr. Doug's report, we just want to continue to let you do, we are still doing line dancing, but it won't stop if you don't show up. But every Saturday at twelve P M, okay? I will not be here this Saturday because I have personal, um, things that need to be done. Starting in August, then please start showing up every Saturday at twelve. We also have old school dancing that's being done starting in August, that you're learning to do chop top, the bop, the two-step. The guys come and come down and work with us. Guys come out, we need our men. We need our men, because he said, I can't go to everybody and teach it, but I need help. But we're asking all you guys to come out, it's a good fun time. If you want to be enjoying that time, and we will be here every Friday and they'll start the class at six. Comes out of the way, it's over there at six, because he likes to practice to make sure he's right for him. But we have been having that. Also, we're looking, we're discussing, I said, that we're looking at to have an old school fun day here in the borough for the kids, learning different games. So we'll have the chess, we'll have the checkers, we'll have the other games that people like and play. I don't know if you know, but I used to play jacks, different games, the old school things you want to start up here, just hoping for you to start more things with them again in the borough. And that will be what I have to add at this point. Oh, and chair, chair exercises are coming. If you like me, you gotta sit down. So we're utilizing our chairs to our exercise and you'll be surprised how much sweat you can do from working out your body in the chair. So that will be starting also in October, I mean, August. Thank you. Next we have our manager's report.
So I'm going to yield a bit of my, uh, time to council, I think, because you forgot to mention on our agenda. Thank you. So what I forgot to mention was, uh, to, we need to request a grant, the amount of the one million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Woodland Avenue and Morton Avenue intersection, modernization phase two. So that is on the agenda, um, to make to.
And Bethan, there's no match for that grant.
Correct. And, and my only other mention is just to piggyback on the chief, our, uh, Morton Summer Social Touch a Truck is the twenty-first of August and that's six to eight P M. It was a great event last year, um, hopefully bigger and better this year. Kind of, uh, have added a few things, um, so please make sure that you mark that down. Um, other than that, again, chief, thank you for your leadership as well as the department and all that you all are doing, whether it's with the kids at, uh, the camp or the, uh, learning center.
Step by step.
Step by step. Still a little mad that you guys get to read and I don't, but that's okay.
We, and we got ice cream last week.
Well, takes place. But again, thank you from, from that to the commendation and the work that, you know, has been doing. You guys are doing a phenomenal, you know, job, um, and we cannot thank you enough for that, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Especially as well with the helmets. We all know how important that is. And, and may I add props to the fact that you've also been able to introduce that over to Springfield so that we can give as many kids in one go. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next we have our managers' report.
Yes, Council President, as we discussed previously, I got a number of, uh, written quotes for the tree work in Jacobs Park and Sycamore Woods, uh, the lowest responsible bidder, and I, you know, I, I did my homework on this. I, I called a number of people that he, uh, gave me that used him in the past. Low bidder is, uh, Moore's Landscaping and Tree Service out of Havertown in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So I recommend them. There was two other, um, uh, quotes, uh, P J G, thirty-seven thousand and twenty-eight dollars, and then Pro Tree, thirty-five thousand. So this one was significantly less, um, and all the, um, references that he gave me, and I checked out with other managers, uh, who might know them, and they were spoken of very highly, so I recommend, uh, Moore's out of Havertown.
Moore's, M O O R E?
Yeah, uh, M O O R E apostrophe P S. Moore's Landscaping and Tree Service, thirty-three Hastings Avenue, Havertown, PA.
All right, were you able to follow up and see if they were able to remove the mulch?
I, I did, they're going to look into that. That'll be an additional cost because that wasn't included, but that's something we can do. I don't think it'll be that much, because they, they can come in with their, you know, bucket, yeah.
He declined what offered the mulch to the residents.
We, we have done that, Michelle, a number, you know, I know Mr. Heffler took some, couple other residents took some. Um, we put it out there, we can, yeah.
We've been offering. Thank you.
So we're going to go and proceed to the action items.
Excuse me, just, uh, I don't know if you want to do it, report on Central Delaware, Mr. Littlecraft came.
He came last time.
Okay, he's here.
Were you prepared to speak, were you prepared to speak this time?
I can highlight it, yes.
Okay, come on. Did he get the last time?
I'm probably in the number. Captain Robert couldn't get his stuff ladder for the newspaper.
Well, I just went to.
Maybe he can give me like a hand up.
No, just be.
I'm kidding myself trying to put that thing in there.
No, let me inform you. On the side of the.
How young was I used to be?
Mr. Littlecraft, on the side of the container, it has slots on both sides that slide back.
Oh.
Yep, on the sides, on both sides.
Say that on the side up front. I'll probably give you a couple highlights. This is to be some highlights from the Delaware County, Central Delaware County Authority, which has one borough representative also in Germany. Our email address is going to be changing as of August the first, that will be notifying everybody about that. And, uh, Delaware County invites Central Delaware County Authority to participate in pilot program that will allow us to join the energy procurement program. The program is designed to achieve the purchasing of one-hundred percent sustainable energy within the next few years. The board does an annual, ordered it true up as they call it, they looked at what they estimated is going to be your treatment cost and then in June, by June of the following year, they see if we estimate guys to what it actually costs. But we received a present of one million, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which we applied to the budget to, um, keep your treatment costs at, at lower hopefully in the future. We received a grant for five hundred thou, five hundred thousand dollars for, um, the work that we have to do, project, uh, local shared town grant project, is the sanitary sewer evaluation survey, and these are townships that have high priority, leaks coming from the system that are having major impact on inflow and infiltration. So, uh, the lowest bid we got for that was three hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars, so we have a margin here. However, already for twenty-twenty-six, Delcor has established that, uh, another area is going to be displaced with a hundred thousand dollars, so we'll have some of that. I don't know what work will be the cost to do that. We had, we received our 2024 annual audit. Everything was in order. There was no objections and no criticisms of what worked out today. They were for part of things in turn out. I think I've been there. The other problem at our pump station was the stand-by generator, but we're working on that. We got that thing pretty well. One, one, one point to go back one. We received the local share town, if I repeat myself, for $500,000 going to be used now. I did mention that. And, but I was going to ask you. We're doing, we're rehabbing our interceptor, rehabbing the trap line. We finished that in '24. Little Pump Creek will be finishing that in '25, and the Stony Creek Interceptor, we're starting that in '26. The total project was around $16 million, so $900,000. We applied for a grant for that for the total amount. We didn't receive it. Hopefully, we received half of that. We didn't receive that. We did receive a grant for 1.9 billion, and we applied that to that. Now, we received a loan for the difference from Penda, and the loan is for a 20-year period. The, the, the average interest cost of that over 20 years would be 2.04%. Actually, the first five years only paid interest on the amount outstanding, like 1.74%, and then it's like in 15 years, it goes higher. But the average is about 2.4%. So it was a very good loan, had very good interest rate, and we shopped on that. And, like, the Pump Creek will push, we're wanting more support then. And that's, those are some of the highlights we did for tonight, Matt.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much. Okay.
We have several action items for tonight that I will read. Wouldn't you like to? Oh, the first, the first is to, a resolution to approve the proposal for Moore's Landscaping and Tree Service in the amounts of $19,250 and zero cents for tree removal and clearance in Sycamore Woods and Jacobs Park.
Can you just hear, our borough manager talked about it, if we can get a, well, to utilize this company? Move. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's a motion carries.
The next is with respect to the multimodal transportation fund grant, which I will read in full. The resolution reads, "As be resolved that Morton Borough, Delaware County hereby request a multimodal transportation fund grant of $1,683,747 and zero cents from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Woodland Avenue and Morton Avenue intersection modernization phase two. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate Bernice Clark Diggerson, Council President, and Martha Preston, Borough Secretary, as officials to execute all documents and agreements between Morton Borough and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant." The last paragraph says, "I'm Martha Preston, duly qualified Secretary of Morton Borough, Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct copy of a resolution duly adopted by a majority vote of the Morton Borough Council at a regular meeting held July 23rd, 2025, and said a resolution has been reported in the minutes of Morton Borough and remains in effect as of this date."
Okay, so that's a motion. Move forward, go ahead. So move. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
The next is a resolution to approve the minutes of the June 11th, 2025 agenda and June 25th, 2025 regular meetings.
Can I get a motion approved, minutes? So move. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
The next motion is to approve the appointment of John Wills as Borough Solicitor.
Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second. Third. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Lastly, the final motion for tonight is to ratify and affirm the payment of bills as listed for the month of June 2025.
Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second. Third. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, we want to make sure everybody pays attention to all our company activities, which will be our committee meetings next month. They're all dated and in times. Mr. Stubbs, I want to make sure we have the right time for you. March the 6th?
Yes.
Okay. We'll make sure that's down right this time. We have upcoming zoning meeting. It will be held on August the 2nd. Any minor interestations ever to come out and force your pros and cons with this? I mean, I won't go through everything, but you know the committee meetings, they're coming up. We look forward to seeing everybody there. Now, we have open discussion. We have Mr. Lee.
On these dates, excuse me, the upcoming meeting, you have two, there's two listed for August 12th at the same time.
Yeah, it's, public safety should be sixth. That's, that's a mistake.
No problem. Thank you.
Yep.
We want to make sure. Two places at once.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lee. White Olding, 123 West Sullivan Avenue, Morton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, United States of America. Council Roberts, who we're discussing earlier during your committee meeting, encouraging the women in Morton to get mammograms. I also encourage men too to get themselves checked out for breast cancer. Don't laugh or cough. It's rare, but men are susceptible to breast cancer. They don't believe me? Ask Montel Williams. Second of all, while, while sickle cell leukemia is primarily afflicts those of African-American ancestry, Caucasians can get it too. Again, it's even more rare, but it, but it can happen. And while TASX afflicts those mainly of Eastern, Eastern European descent, basically mostly among the Ashkenazi Jews, I hope I'm pronouncing that word right. If I'm not, forgive me, but Gentiles are also susceptible to TASX disease. So we're not all that, so, so we're not all that entirely different from each other. Like, like or not, like or not, in certain traits, we're all, we're all connected. So please, so please, if you notice anything wrong, get yourself checked out, especially if you notice, especially if you notice lumps are getting thicker, they're not going away. Problems don't, don't go away as you ignore it. And, and if you're fortunate enough, or depending upon your situation, unfortunate enough that a woman in your life, and she's on your back about getting yourself checked out, if nothing else, get, just, just use the, just use the brains that God gave you and get yourself checked out if you notice anything wrong or if you feel there's anything wrong. I want to conclude with a statement I heard the other day, and in, it was an interview, that Sylvester Stewart, who was the lead singer of the rock group from the 60s, Lion Family Stone, who recently passed away, if you're not aware of it. Don't hate the black. Don't hate the white. If you don't like the bit, hate the bite.
Thank you, second. We have Ms. Todd.
Thank you. Cecilia Todd, 110 Alfield, Morton, Pennsylvania. Um, I put flyers up here for the fire company fundraisers. Um, it's one page and it's got four advertisements on it, so take a page with you. There's the Rita Water Ice fundraiser on July 30th from 5:00 to 8:00. Don't forget to drop off cases of water and Gatorade to the fire company. We definitely need it during the summer. And then there's a fundraiser at the coffee station on August 16th from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Where John Will donate a portion of his receipts to the fire company. And the big cornhole tournament is on September 13th, so be aware of all that. Take one of these when you show you and your friends now. Um, and this Sunday, this is the Morton Summer Jam that's put on by Chris Nelson. Please take one of these home, and it's from 12:00 to 8:00 over at Jacobs Park. You know, come out and support his efforts and, you know, watch what he does in promoting Morton in his own special way. Um, I just had a couple questions. Oh, and I can't forget the Touch a Truck, which is at Social Field on August 21st. Do you need a DJ there?
I love that.
Okay, we'll go DJ.
He did a great job later.
Okay, he's been there a couple of years, but he got them. Um, I just wanted to give kudos to the fire department and to the police department in doing this fundraiser for the community. It's always a lot of fun, so please come out and see everybody. I just had a couple questions. First, to commend the police department. I can't believe that I live in a city where you had to arrest someone so vile and had so, so many weapons, and it was so, so dangerous. And I just, I can't believe that happened. And the people that robbed the holes. I mean, people should know this and be aware of it, so thank you for bringing that to our attention and thank you for the services that you provide. Um, I have to commend the Morton Fire Company too. If you listen to the report that Vice President Shontay Miller gave today, we're busy all the time with servicing the community with fires and drills and learning and training. And, you know, we're just not out doing fundraisers all the time. We're out servicing buildings. And please don't forget your annual funds to the fire department. That was important to me to say. And, um, I just had one question from Councilperson Noah. Excuse my bad voice, I'm sorry. Um, I just wanted, there's a fee that Morton pays to the stormwater authority. What is that fee? Because there was a discussion recently about a raise.
For, if we've been a member of the collaborative for going on around 12 years and it's remained the same, I believe, I believe, yeah, I don't have the number, but I'm going to say it's $2,750 for going the stormwater portion of it.
$2,750.
Yeah, and that going up $250. And then the PRP portion, which includes the filing of paperwork, which is where the grants really are run through, and the filing of the paperwork with the Commonwealth and the Feds that needs to be done every year. That runs about, is it $4650 or $4750?
So 27 and 46 is, okay, that's a considerable, considerable amount of.
Well, in return, we've gotten over $200,000 in number in three.
Over 12 years.
Right. Maybe, maybe, but just since I've been involved, because it's been that long, it could have been more, more than I can, that's something I have to research, but not counting the, the educational things that we have with ring drill workshops or free ring drills given out and composting, composting's given out, plants and trees and bushes and things.
Okay, the more trees that you plant, you understand, they all, they all grow up and they all die. And then we're forced with.
And we're also forced with the $19,000 bill to take care of them.
Well, they also clean the air and make everybody healthier because they clean the leaves and they all stand help from flooding assessments, as you, where lawns don't, bushes, trees, flowers.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, Sam, just want to add, was all the grants you said we wanted to get out was for Morton Borough?
No, I'm talking about all, all, all.
All the minutes.
Yes, because sometimes those grants are split up among the municipalities. I can't, I don't know what they are. That's what I'm saying. It's a collaboratives.
That's why I wanted to make clear that it wasn't Morton.
So we have to look at.
No, no, the 200,000, the 200,000, I just said, yes, that was all Morton.
That one grant.
That's, it was two or three grants total.
Let's look into it. Let's figure out.
All right, thank you. All right, I was just making sure.
Thank you.
Different number, there's a.
No, 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 they have, they have hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants.
Okay, thank you.
But you don't have to.
All right, um, next is Mr. Heffner.
All right, basically, the only thing I have to say is I'd like to thank our borough manager for being with us. He's moving on, but thank you very much, Jack, for your services. I wish you good luck on your next career.
Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't seen what's happened yet. You don't think. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Tommy Zipper?
Zippy, yeah.
Zipper, I'm sorry.
My name is Anthony Zippe. I purchased a property here on 114 Wall Street in 1984. Um, and I've been running my business out of there since I purchased the building behind my shop at 114 Main Streets, and I bought 243 and 245 Wall Street. I've been paying all my bills since 1984. I even pay business use tax almost $5,000 a year to the township. And I get a collection from Portnoy Attorneys for a trash fee for 2022, and I get another one for a sewer fee for 2023. I want to know why the township sent me the collection, why all, all the bills that I have are paid. I can't look these up because they're a little bit older, but, and I can't go back and bank things because I only could go back a year and a half. And all the business I do here in the township, why isn't on the bills, the sewer bills and the trash bills passed due amount? Why is my balance zero when I pay it in full when the bills come due? Why did I go to collection? I want to know why. I've never been to collection in my life.
Well, the idea was, there are collections upcoming for partners from 2018 on 2024, Jack.
Why wasn't I notified?
Well, you had to be notified, but you got.
I was never notified.
That's fine. It's fine.
Okay.
There were notifications, letters sent out. We kept talking about it, council. There were letters sent out from the borough. Everybody, who owed money, what you had to do.
I never got.
Well, I'm just saying, they were sent out. We were told you could come in and try to do a payment plan or work it out.
I don't need a payment plan.
This is what I'm saying. These are the things that were done, they were put in place. There are three steps. You got your letter, the call to come in and work it out. If you didn't work it out and everything, you got another call.
I did not.
But it says, then you got sent up to the Portnoy, because that just started telling, telling you, you will be sent to Portnoy if you do not come in there to try to rectify what's going on. Now, I don't have your telephone. I can't talk to you. It's important, though, Sam. Your job would be right now is to contact Portnoy.
I did.
And they, they, they give you the information?
No, they know, they know nothing. I went and saw Marty. She gave me some kind of report, but she didn't quite understand it. Um, and, but my thing isn't the money. I never got notified. I never got the bill. And how come my current bills for all the properties don't have a balance pass due on them? Why did they never have a balance pass due on them? Why would I get sent to collection? I just, I'm very upset about it because I've never been to collection. I paid all my bills, all my inspection fees, everything that the township required of me, and I didn't, I never got a letter, and every time I come in here, nobody said, the sewer guy never got me, or the, or the trash people never contacted me. I'm right there on 114 Wall Street, and I didn't get it by mail because if I did, I would have paid. But I came here tonight because I went to collection and I don't like it.
Um, can I ask a quick question, just, just to kind of back off? So, because you have mentioned that you do pay the bills regularly. So, and I think it's quite possibly an easy fix because if you are paying, and like you said you are, you should have something.
Yeah, these bills are old. These bills are old. They're in a box somewhere. My wife wrote her ankle, so I can't get them right now.
So I would.
But I still don't like, but why doesn't the bills that I get now show pass due amounts? Why did it go back to 2022?
I'm not disagreeing with you. Do you want to answer?
No.
Okay, I, I don't disagree. Okay, I, I don't disagree because, you know, a lot of changes have been made so that we can continue. Just let me finish though, because I, I think it's still an easy fix. I know you're upset, but I do think it's very easy. I do understand that your receipts may be in a box, but.
But your, but your papers from the township don't even read properly.
So can I ask you to come back? You know how far, if he comes back into the office and we have you sit down with our manager and he'll pull up your information for you?
I can't.
No, we don't have it. I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying. I'd like to know and talk it down. I need to have it in front of me. So we need to pull up all your information.
Okay.
And you said you didn't get the.
I never, this is.
So if you come back in here by Friday.
Since 1985, I paid my birth calendar tax every year, every business. Paid all my school taxes, all my real estate taxes, paid all my inspection fees, paid all my sewer fees. Why did these couple, what happened to them?
I can't answer that until I have.
And what happened to the letters? Because I wasn't notified.
You just get like.
I got these letters, I went right to Marty. After I got to Marty, I told Marty I want to come here. She said, I can't really do it. I went on the website and I put my name down for tonight.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, I would say come back in. You did, you did get those letters, obviously, right?
I did get those letters.
No, you got the letters to let you know today that it went to Portnoy, correct?
No, I got the letters from Portnoy.
Did, that's from.
And it's for 22 and 23?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm upset a little bit.
No, 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 no.
We just, we also need to, you know, because you're also talking to council members that are new, you know, that, that's prior year. So we're also trying to, you know, break this out. So that's why we, we just need you to come in. And, and though it may be a little bit of work.
They were fooling around.
Yeah, although it may be a little bit of work, if you can also get your receipts because like you said, you did pay them.
I'm 90% sure they're paid. If I got the bill, they got paid because I never missed the bill.
That's what I'm saying, though. It would also make it probably a look to help.
And why isn't, why doesn't the bill when you get it show your pass due amount?
Right. So may I, may I speak to that? Immunicipalities, municipalities for anything, municipalities, just like a tax bill would work. Once the year ends, it goes, it goes to somebody else and it's no longer for us to collect. We cannot collect on that because now it has gone to somebody else. So for example, you will never, ever, ever see on a 2025 tax bill that you owe 2024. You will get something from the county saying that. You, that will, it is not a credit card where it's like you have a balance due. It is a municipal bill. And once it gets turned over to another entity, we are not, and we are no longer allowed to collect on it without working with that entity. So it will never be on that bill carrying forward.
And that's why I was saying you have to go to.
Correct.
And before make sure.
Okay, but I never received any letters.
I want to follow up, all right?
At mine, because I, just like I'm here tonight, I would have been here.
I've got the.
Okay, I don't want to take any more time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, both of you are, still move? Thank you.